Okay, it's seven o'clock coming to call us. If you ask for a township or request these meetings by order, our first, our first bourbon is the Clutch Blank Man's in America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everybody for coming this evening. Okay, the first order of business here is the consent agenda. Any questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Um, I think we should take a moment to discuss any other things that we have to do. I think it is the only thing we can discuss, it's something that we need to be discussing.
All right.
Yes, my turn for any comments we have to make. It's not a surprise.
All right, we'll strike. Any other? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the place of the settlement. Support.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent of the town of limitation. We'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Cause it's yes.
Even chess.
Stone, yes.
All right, new business aid, King and Kink, a title pending to report. This is both side of our town. Yeah, on the side, citizens' confidence. Yeah, sure, there's another one at the end of the meeting. You might remember more than three. Okay. All right, we'll move it on. Um, because it's King and Kink, a town financial report. We made a decision where we're only going to do a full audit every other year, but the year, I mean, years between we do this, um, mini audit or very quick audit here. Do you have any questions?
I'm going to motion to accept the financial confirmation by King and Kink's support.
Okay, we have a motion support to accept, um, the, you know, how that, I mean, confirmation, financial report. Okay, near discussion. Well, hello?
Anderson, yes.
Cause it's yes.
Steven, yes.
Stone, yes.
Castle Township Master Planner. You can see in front of you, our planner has presented us with a very nice master planner, colorful. And what we're updating today, the night commission is done and they're asking the board to hit a 63-day public review. So public, well, uh, public to block it, plus we send it out to neighboring communities where they're.
And it can be changed and amended if you need that.
So I have that.
What?
Yeah.
Well, there's the I O line mark. I mean, that's yet 63 days.
I already got it.
Oh, wow, fast, 63 days is a little fast. Okay, any question for this board? We have a brand new, a very nice website posted on, I've known it, if you haven't visited the new website, I've heard you, it was, I thought, I lost track. Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to begin the required 63, 63-day public review of the master plan of 2024. Ask for township, support.
Okay, we have a motion support to get 63-day public review for the master plan. Any follow-up question? A district comment, this is the first time we redid the paired master plan in 25 years. Since then, every five years we reviewed it, made a couple of slight changes, but this is the first redo in 25 years. Okay. All right, we have a motion support.
And I passed by there yesterday and it looks good. It's very grassy now, since it looks good.
Oh, wow, yeah, you've got a job to do, but that's a nice beginning.
We'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Cause it's yes.
Steven, yes.
Stone, yes.
Okay. All right, um, the next one, we have a road commission work order. Mike was able, we had that original batch of ARPU money that we had from Commissioner Rush in 2021, did the overlay on Sycor Highway to Dublin Church. And we also did their color replacement on the landing drain. We had 12,261, and Mike was able to get the price down, able to replace three colors. One here on Melvin Road and two on, um, Tessa's. They're all, all three of them are failing, they're cross tubes, and they need to be replaced.
And I just wonder, in the rain, I talked to Mike when he dropped these off, and this is totally came by the time his ARPU money didn't actually came.
That's correct. This, this will, this last one we have, spend it by the end of this year, this will exhaust everything.
Yes.
Yeah, Mike does, Mike's saying what else, excuse me.
So I make a motion that we, um, approve these two work orders.
They come to the summer, they have 12,261. Well, they come to October, about 12,261.
12,000, I get 3780 and 6400.
For me, wait, can I do another?
10,261, so that's what I just say with my motion.
Okay, yes, for the.
Over to you. 10,200.
Yeah, I, I have $2,000, uh, 200. The answer?
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any question? Okay, all in favor?
I don't know.
I mean, roll call vote.
Maybe for some else? Yeah. Yes. Cause it's.
Steven, yes. Okay, motion carries. Okay, next one is the 2024 request for local military distribution to Sycor County Parts and Recreation. We do this every year, we show on how much, um, that we got for last year and how much, um, grants and donations and that. And we have to approve this instead of two county parts of record order to get our distribution.
So on your discretion, you need to get rid of the master sentence that MIT and our transport plan, they want to know how we're spending the local village. That strand.
Okay. Local military. All right. Building on the floor.
Yes. Up, up key.
All right, good. Okay.
We didn't already sign this up?
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve it.
I want to come again until I see him, I'm just like, sorry.
We'll wait till next month.
Or if you have another week for some accounts, I don't know. Is there a timeline for this?
Well, they said that it's Monday.
Oh.
I thought it was October.
Okay.
We'll wait till next month.
So, or pause, motion session.
Okay. We have a next item of business, invoice. For Pam Law, invoice number 071234, for 1,025,000.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm surprised. So that are ongoing coordination approaches?
Yes, yes. It says, Dan's designer, road commission, admitted that it afforded among points for the median consumers.
I, I'm just gonna say this, I go back to the very beginning where we hired Pam. She's done nine parts in the state of Michigan. Why didn't she plan ahead to do the median use entrance and then instead of back track?
I know, it was an oversight on their part, you know, that we do, um, phase one, it's with escort grants. Phase one would have had a light duty. It would have been on by party. When they included phase two in there, that offered to the median.
But we always had the plan that you were going to do phase one, phase two, phase three. So if, if even if we didn't do phase one and two together, phase two still had the same amount of parking spots, so it would have been added.
What's that?
Phase one still had the same amount of spots, phase two had the same, so it wouldn't matter if we do it together or separately, the amount of parking spots would have changed.
Okay, the amount for only phase one, when we added phase two, that offered to the median.
Right, well, we offered to do phase one, phase two, phase three.
So had the same amount of parking spots in the end of phase one and phase two.
So phase two did not increase the parking spots.
Yes, phase two did.
It did. So what I'm saying is all along, we were going to do phase two, so those parking spots should have already been added.
Right, there should have been, um, a thought there that one day that it would have triggered a median.
Right, because now we're paying extra money for them to go back and afford the road.
Because this entrance in the interest of the target crowd that she's negotiating, I see a lot said about gravel, is this going to be tarmac?
Yes, it's good.
Or gravel?
No, it's gonna be paved.
And was that a requirement in the beginning?
Yes, even if with light duty, there would have been paid things.
So now we're just talking about with?
Yeah, more extensive, they have to place a rear culvert there. Um, I tried to, I mean, do you know what, we, we beg the road commission, it's like, they were not bought because of the number of losses.
And do we have any idea whatsoever what this driveway expansion is going to cost us?
I'll be getting that from Tim Moore.
Do you have any idea?
Yes.
Because we, at this point, we owe them $95,000.
This board is out of the Sycor area, right?
So just be aware that we currently have $200, $2,000 left in parks and rec. We're going to be spending $95,000 to make this last payout. I don't know what the, uh, in, and with a destroyed one is going to be. I'm just saying.
So I have a question about that. When we originally approved this bit, there was a certain amount of money, I think it was $6,000. There was a certain amount of money set aside for that entrance that we already included.
Yeah, $6,000. Yeah, would have been for light duty entrance.
Okay.
So now we're going out.
So whatever this next bid is, that should be accounted for. And then that brings me to another question, since they're going to give us an estimate, does it need to go out to go to other people? Just because they're taking that part, does that mean that they own it and it's connected?
Well, that's a good question.
I would check it, but. And then.
I think the presumption is they've handled it pretty well.
I, you'd think so, but I have to double check it, just in case. I was like, whoever you need to call, whether it be MTA or whatever.
Yeah, the thing is, well, Dan's in there. Pam's designer, they, like, he's not, he's a landscape architect, he's not a someone like here. If he was a someone, an engineer, probably would have caught that.
So we're paying for both packages, you see, Pam Law will pay for civil engineers, for landscape artists, we're paying for their expertise, which we do not have. And, uh, as of July 31st, 2024, and going back one year, July 31st, 2023, this project, we have already paid, uh, this company $10,761 just in oversight.
That goes back to on this on person.
Oversight fees, yes, and there's more, but I'm looking at just this project, because she's done other things.
Yes.
I do have to say that, um, when I told you this this morning, when I was in Allegan County, this weekend, I took a drive to the Castle Township Park, which is in there for my kids. It's gorgeous. It takes years to get a park like that.
Absolutely.
Uh, she is the best at what she does. We just have to watch our hands. I'm sorry, when we're down to the $17,000 maintenance fee that we get.
That's not.
That's it. They're either going to have to go out for grants and pay her to help you go out for grants, or we're at a stagnation area. We're not going to go and hurt her. So just be aware, because we are not borrowing from the general fund for parks and rec. We can bankrupt the township faster than that.
I, you know what, I would love to see, I don't know about you guys, but I would love to see, like, they keep that, I'd be long and up in on the park and maybe have a spreadsheet. This is what we spent, this is what we have, this is what we still need to spend, something like that, so we have an idea.
I try to get that from the, from the work orders, yeah, I try to get that from the work orders.
Yeah, but Joe, this is Joe's baby, so we can.
I'll, sure.
And I would just say, maybe we can do it like everyone's. And then, um, we were talking about it this morning, it's kind of by a season's, we've heard from, um, she used to say, and I said, yes, update.
She, uh, we had her in the Parks and Recreation Committee, we're talking playgrounds, and we're trying to monitor her.
I don't necessarily want to hear about playgrounds, but maybe you update, um, how, how is it, I wonder, why?
She should grant some of the R.
But if she's gonna charge us for it.
Well, well, yeah, that too, she's the expert at, anybody here a good grant writer? No, step right up. That's a, that's a special.
If she, if she can do that, then yeah.
Because that's how phase three is going to get done. That's how, uh, playground equipment is going to be put in. That's how the pickleball court is going to be.
Are they putting up pickleball?
Oh, I. I don't know what pickleball is, but everywhere I go, that's where people are playing.
We don't need the playground.
We don't, at our age, we just need the pickleball. No basketball courts, they can go to the high schools for that, they can go to the high schools to play tennis, but, um, as far as I can see, pickleball is the way to go to the future.
I think it's gonna be a lot of this next time.
Yeah. Oh, it's going to be here, oh, wow, that just goes to.
They can have break games in this people.
And can you find out for me, please, I see the item, I see the line item, um, on these work orders, but I do not know where to look to find out exactly how many big tables there is.
And there's big tables in the spots, did you see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Like, two of them up there, the phase one, a lot of dead, one dead near Fredmore Highway.
Are they already there?
No, I don't have that.
They're already?
That's one we got seen, um, briefly during the, the year.
Because we already paid for them.
Right.
Yeah.
There's, I think, six underneath the canopy, two up there.
Okay, I was just wondering, how many there are?
I think, yeah, a cold or something. I can't see those.
Well, if they're the, if they're the, um, the heavy metal ones that I've seen at Marine City, in their pavilion, yeah, those, yeah, nobody's walking out of those. Yeah.
Who knows how much they are?
Three men in a truck.
$18,200. Like I said, they might have been.
It better be metal, it better be that mesh metal, the top. Indestructible, indestructible, immovable.
Okay, we have the item of business.
Well, I'm gonna get back to you, why are we paying for an oversight on their? I understand she does a great job and stuff, but if this is an oversight, why are we doing that?
Have to delay a month, then have to ask questions.
But I'm not taking care, so.
Question, do they deserve the location effort, or if they're going to be sure they're going to do that, then extra effort also, it's hard to question too, but do you make these things?
I don't want to delay anything. I just want an initial answer.
That's true, now there's not gonna be any more invoices for this entrance, 100%?
Yeah, board, we're not gonna, we're not gonna.
No, I'm talking about the. And I want you to find out if it needs to go out to them.
Okay. Okay, Mr.
What are we waiting for?
Yeah, we need a motion on the sentence.
How much?
For 1,125.
How much is it? Support.
Okay, we have a motion to, um, to pay the invoice from Pam Law, 1,125, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Cause it's yes.
Steven, yes.
Over, yes.
Okay, Nickel and Sapp, cyber insurance.
So I, um, contacted Michelle from Nickel and Sapp and asked her, if we could decrease the cyber insurance, how much it would be a savings and how much, what is the limit we should get? And, um, I actually contacted Jay at High Tech, High Tech too, there I was. And he also talked to her, and he basically thought that 100,000 would be plenty if we were to get capped. He had an accountable company, not a municipality, but company. They, when it all of a sudden, um, the recovery and whatnot, it was not 100,000, you know, I'm having this back. So we do have the product back up now, we have a lot of, um, Felso lists and I, internet security that we didn't have. So I'm confident that we have enough to keep us on the safe, and it, I don't think we need to do that many times. I don't think we need that much, I, I mean, it could, but I don't. So that would save us 1,000, 988,000 a year, and I'll go through it.
Okay. The motion support, what with the vote pass, um, more green there?
I'll contact her.
Okay, the motion support, any other questions? Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Cause it's yes.
Steven, yes.
Stone, yes.
With the Oregon pest control.
I dug up the contract and it looks like when we signed the contract in March of 2021, it was for a year. And then it would automatically renew for a year thereafter, but it said that the agreement can be canceled by either party, by giving written notice of termination at least 16 days prior to the end of the contract. So I'm thinking we cancel or not, because I don't see them doing any difference around here. And we call ABC, whatever.
I have, I have a couple of.
A local area on.
Is anyone having problems in their office?
We did a couple months ago, yes, yeah, but we called them and they came right out. You don't come out here now.
It's one supporter?
No, it's a player.
Yeah.
But what we talk about, that's a lot, right?
It's funny how they.
Yeah, but I mean, you could probably save money by going somewhere else.
You wanna, you wanna do that, huh? You wanna bring money? Do you want to do letters, you guys listen, you will be doing that?
Um, go.
The board's okay with you writing the letter?
Yes. Does I make a motion to cancel the Arken yearly pest control? The board, quarterly?
Yeah, motion support to, uh, cancel the Arken quarterly pest control.
So it's a $150 quarter, and you're. Oh, okay, Anderson.
Okay, we have a roll call, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Steven, yes.
Cause it's yes.
Okay, light fees for invoices.
Um.
You have a lot of like payers?
It's not.
Well, this is for the project control engineering, so it's, um, when, when the building department, you want.
It's a plan of commission. Uh, for commercial or industrial applications, we require in most instances that project control engineering do an engineering review. Uh, Mr. Monkey has been reluctant to bill those folks directly. He feels that the township has more latitude in, um, collection, collection agency services if people don't want to pay his bill.
And what prompted this is we had.
And what prompted this is we had an invoice, actually two invoices, one from March. Three invoices, one from March, one from May, and one from July. And they hadn't been paid yet. So we, we paid, we paid project engineering, but the person that, I'm not gonna say.
But the person, they were.
It was like sixty-two, it's like twenty-five hundred dollars.
But they offer one person.
And we'd have more leverage sending it to collections if we have to?
Yeah, we can send any of our invoices or whatever to collections. So, and then, you know, when we do send it to collections, we only get a certain percentage. So that's where the late fee would help us recruit some of that.
I see.
So we're just asking if the board would approve us to do that.
Okay, do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, you have approval. We have a motion support to, uh, to have a late fee or one percent from bond, uh, invoices not paid, send to collections after three months. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Uh, Steven, yes.
So, yes.
B S and A payments.
Can I come, Candy? Does that explain it? Are you, I'm gonna go ahead and explain it?
Yeah.
Um, so basically, right now, how we have it set up for the building department is when anyone wants to be online with like their credit card, or if they come in and wanna be with their credit card, we do it through B S and A, which then goes through Point Pay. And with Point Pay, we get lag time. So if someone's standing there waiting for a permit, we have to wait for it to process through the system and it takes longer. So B S and A reached out to us because they're offering a new service where they offer payments straight through their system. It's free, it's included in our annual, um, I think, whatever we pay annually. I, it doesn't change much when it comes to what residents would be paying or contracted.
Isn't that a little bit cheaper?
I think it is because I think right now it's three percent. To them, and it's two point nine five, so it's, and then fifty cent per transaction. But we don't have to pay for Point Pay on our. So.
And the payment is instantaneed.
Yes, there's no lag time, like we have now, it, it'll happen immediately.
But that was a good explanation.
So this is just for the building department?
It would have to be. It would have to be for the treasurer's office to.
I, but I like, I like that it's B S and A.
Yes.
But it's not the point.
Now, what I was saying is, is the amount of money that we collect on fire runs. Does it, I don't think it would, I think we should just look into the Point Pay contract and see when we can cancel it. I don't think it makes sense to pay the fifty dollars a month for the amount of money we get in for credit card questions.
One a month, if I can get that.
In company.
Are you trying to.
Most pay or fires important.
Most of the time it's from insurance companies.
Yeah, so they can send us a check and stuff. They offer, B S and A offers training on how to do it.
Be good.
So if you and Linda are interested, they'll train you on how to use it.
Okay.
I just, you all, that's what I like, is it's within the system. I don't like going out to Point Pay. I don't like it, so I don't do it.
So, Joe, the Point Pay, I think you took care of that contract. Can you find that and see when the expiration date is and see if we can cancel that?
All right, we have a motion here, and we have approval.
The main motion?
Yeah. We have support.
I think that was me.
Okay, Ellen supported for the, uh, to switch the B S and A for the building department and the charter for the payments. April call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Steven, yes.
So, yes.
Okay, motion here. Uh, citizen comments?
I have one, please. I'm gonna take you back to the panel invoices, since her associate is not a civil engineer. Does he bill at a decreased rate?
I'll have to.
Does he bill at a landscape architect rate?
He should have given a fee schedule where it outlines what the primary, what the primary bills and their associates would bill at a less amount.
Um, Pam Lao is principal at a hundred, at a hundred and twenty dollars an hour, and is it David Lightkey? Principal at a hundred and twenty dollars.
He's a principal, but he's not a civil engineer.
It's just that they both say principal, it doesn't say anything.
Well, Joe, you said that he is not a civil engineer. But she is.
And then there's a.
No, Pam's a landscape designer.
A civil engineer would probably come in from the road commission end of it. That's the civil engineer that, that's gonna tell us what that approach needs to be.
I thought you said that Pam was a civil engineer and Mr. Lightkey was not.
No, Pam is a landscape.
Okay, what is Mr. Lightkey, same thing?
I believe he's the same thing, I, I could.
No, I didn't need to check.
Yeah.
That's what I understood you to say, and I could very well be mistaken.
So we're gonna pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, and we're going to follow the instructions of the road commission, who has a civil engineer.
Yeah, Andrew McNiff already approved the plans.
Thanks, that's awesome.
Okay, any other citizens' comments? Okay, board comments?
So, so Mr. McNiff has already approved the plans for the approach. And, and now we're just waiting for what? It's already approved the plans for the approach, so what are we waiting for here?
Well, we'd have to, um, look at, we'd have to approve the, um, the invoice for the work, the initial work that's involved.
And when will we get that invoice?
We'll get that in September. Or we do a special meeting for that, too. What was that option?
You're gonna do, you're gonna check whether or not you can accept other bids.
Right.
I have a question about what are the bills? It says volunteer policy renewal from Nickel and Saff, is that a yearly renewal of Roger?
Yes.
Of all of the volunteers on? It's a volunteer.
No.
No, 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 that was for, I believe we had that added on for the park.
Yeah, we have volunteer insurance.
And that was thirteen thousand, two hundred and eighty?
No, 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 that, it does thirteen thousand, that is, it's probably both, because they were two separate invoices. But when it's on the check run, it probably, but it's both. It's the renewal for the year and it's for the volunteer.
I got you.
But it'll be minus because I talked to Michelle and she said it would be better just to pay the whole thing and then they'll, they'll subtract the nine hundred and eighty-eight and send it back to us for the, what we just decreased it.
All right. Okay, any other citizens' comment? Board comments?
Um, I have a couple things. First, I would like to thank everyone who came to vote last Tuesday and early voting too. And I would like to thank all of my election inspectors, one of which is in our audience.
Your two.
Sorry. Yeah, which you, she's a top lover. She's our old standby, starts brand new, so, but thank you. You guys have a amazing job.
We're always looking for more, if anybody wants to work.
Anybody who wants to sign up, we're always looking for more people.
What's your timeframe for that ahead of, ahead of the election coming up?
I have to know by October, because we're having their election inspector class.
Yeah, so if, we have, um, applications, so if you're interested in joining the vision application.
Okay.
Because, yeah, you have to have the inspector training. That would be perfect.
She's doing a DVD class, like, I think I told her, but she told me.
That's all right. Um, and I would like to update our residents on our early voting numbers. So for nine days of early voting, we had a total between Casco and Columbus, fifty-three voters. Thirty-eight were from Casco, fifteen were from, were from Columbus. Um, I had Vicki do a spreadsheet today for the total wages that were paid to our election inspectors. And to Vicki. Um, it came out to, if you, if you do a total for the fifty-three, it was eighty dollars and seventeen cents per voter. If you break it into Casco and Columbus, then we paid a hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-one cents per voter to come in to vote early. And I can tell you that quite a few of the people that did early voting were either our election inspectors, their family, friends, or we had people come in that, um, maybe we talked them into doing something new because we hadn't done it before, like you can take your absentee ballot and you can bring it in and you can put it through the tabulator. So one of our residents graciously said he would do that so that we could see how it was done, because it hadn't been done before. Um, so he would have just brought it to our office. So the amount of people that actually used it that were brand new, it's hard to say. On that note, I would like to, um, ask the residents to please contact the county commissioners, the state representatives, the county clerk's office. And implore that the county clerk runs the early voting centers for our county. This costs way too much money for all of our little municipalities. Um, we were told by the county clerk's office that it was a conflict of interest for her to, to run the early voting centers, because she serves in, in some means on the board of commissioners. But I know that there's other counties in the state of Michigan, Oakley County runs the whole early voting centers.
That's a large county.
I believe in Kalamazoo, their county runs, and I know up north, there's quite a few of them, because there's so many smaller jurisdictions up there. Um, this would save us a lot of money. We're actually saving money by combining Columbus and Casco together as it is. Um, but if the county can do it, and we've had ideas, have six or eight different centers located throughout, you know, some in the north, south, east, west, so that the residents wouldn't have to drive more than, you know, say ten miles to early vote. I know, there's eighty-four.
Eighty-four jurisdictions would split that cost.
Yes, and we, we've banned it. We've banned it, you know, I, I wouldn't have any problem finding workers for the day, going out there myself for a day. We split it amongst everybody and it would, it would be so cost effective to do it that way. The way this is, and, and that's just wages, that's not other costs that are included to run it.
Because we had to have the air on, you had to have the electricity on, and that's a small cost, but it costs money.
Right.
And we had to have three people, by law, you have to have three people.
So we did the minimum, three people, because you don't need three people for fifty-three people over nine days.
What was our biggest day, how many people did we have walking?
That was Sunday, wasn't it?
It was Sunday, we had, I can't, no, we tell you. Twelve people, that was our biggest day. We were here for eight hours, we have to be here for eight hours.
It was usually three people.
Three people. And I mean, nine is the minimum that you have, you know, they keep, I don't, they keep it up to twenty-nine days. I don't know who would do twenty-nine days, but.
Even if they're selling a product, had three people in on a day, they'd have to fire the staff.
Exactly, right.
Even twelve on a Sunday, they'd, they'd shut down a Little Caesar's over that shit.
Right, exactly, exactly. And then one of us had to be here and, you know.
And unfortunately, it's, it's, we have to do it because it's part of the Michigan constitution. It was passed in twenty twenty-two with, with Prop Two. So we have to do it for nine days. I think the only way that can be is if enough people get together, sign petition, have it put back on the ballot, either to repeal it or amend it. I, uh, the weekend before, you can have a couple dates, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or just Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah.
That's more than enough.
That's why we have absentee.
Just voting okay, make it a federal holiday.
Yes.
If one gets off of work, you go and vote. It's the way it's always been, you go and vote. You gotta work, you go after work.
There's no reason you have to.
Do your damn duty, it's, or you don't vote, then, and you sit at home and complain about shit that you couldn't change. There you go, that's.
Exactly, it's a lot, I don't think they explained it well.
Or let's just make it three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and vote whatever the hell we want.
There you go.
Because that would make my life easier.
You're the next president.
But they didn't explain it well, they don't, they just kept saying it was for ID and we already had them.
What's the doctor of it?
Yeah.
If you're the governor.
There you go, so yes, if you guys can please contact the county, county commissioners. The state representatives. Just keep counting them and telling them, because there's no reason that the county can't host a couple different centers.
I'll hit them, they all have my email.
There you go, there you go, there you go. And I'd also like to comment, um, I know in the last month, there's been quite a few Facebook posts. Um, and I would ask people that instead of just posting stuff, if you don't have the facts, to either come to our meetings or call our offices and get the facts. Jerry is very kind to, he comes to the meetings, so he gets the facts and you do. I appreciate that you comment back on some of the information and try to set people straight, but. And I know it's, you know, everyone's gonna do their own thing, but can always come to the meetings. We love it when people come to meetings.
How much of this comment on Facebook either for some or any? What I wanna say, to go back to the voting, you and Vicki did an outstanding job.
Didn't they, no, they, they, yes, yes. I mean, you, you catered to us on election day, and it was just, you were a volunteer on both of you for the whole nine days and then election day, so thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you, yes.
They are with you.
We can't go without you, that, no.
Okay, any other board comments?
I do have one more thing. The budget, is that something that you're gonna take over and do? Okay, so I would get your training going like right now and then start going. Is that revenue expenditure report that you quit moving back in? There's a couple accounts that already need amendments.
So.
Okay.
So if I may add to that budget thing, it was a large bone of contention, a large discourse within our offices. And I implore you, Joe, to go to the classes that you claimed you took. To me was a misstatement. We cannot have more of this. It's all of us in the office. So please, it's your fiduciary duty, your number one responsibility. And I'm asking you, not only as a fellow employee that works with you day in and day out, but as a resident of this township, to take that fiduciary responsibility dutifully and seriously and do whatever you have to do to get the knowledge to be able to perform that duty effectively. So we don't have this dissension, not only at your table, but day in and day out at the office. And I say this, it may seem disrespectful, but I don't mean it that way.
Brenda was blunt, I agree with you.
All right, any other? Have a quick park, um, update, the grading of the topsoil is complete, there will be plant grass shortly. On the final, well, they have to do the entrance, but the final steps will be picket tables, parking stops, and striping. That'll be the final steps on the thing.
And the benches?
We'll get those installed, too.
Good.
Okay, um, we have to have a compatible renewable energy ordinance.
Of course.
This will be for, we are for the so, to be, be compliant with the state thing. Uh, we do have a solar ordinance, ours just needs slight tweaking. I got with our planner, Karen, and she will have something for the planning commission in September, a modified one. Get that done, it needs to be in effect by the end of November. Okay, another question? Okay, let's go for, uh, I move for, uh, this one, for Karen.
Can I make a motion to sue Derek?
Support.